All right, everybody, it's nine thirty. If you have anything to say, you can say it.
Thank you.
All right, it's nine thirty. The appointed time for the June meeting, the Wood County Board of Supervisors, we'll call that the order. The clerk has already taken the role. The invocation, I would call on our county clerk, Trent Minor. Please give the invocation, I ask for the body to rise and then remain standing before the committee.
It is on. Good morning.
Good morning.
Really?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good. Nine eleven. Okay, if those are willing, please bow your heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, your wisdom, and your support as we begin this meeting. Help the board to engage in meaningful discussion, allow them to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. We ask that you remind them all that they are, that they do here today, all that they accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the glory, greater glory of you, and for the service of those they serve. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Do you join in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I know it's a little bit of a change. We're having a meeting on a Monday, I want you to know that it's not my doing. You have a county clerk, and I don't think anybody across state would argue that we have one of the best county clerks, but Trent, why don't you tell us why we're having a meeting today?
That thump you heard is just the wheels of the bus just running me over. Actually, the county clerk, they're having their one hundred and seventeenth summer symposium tomorrow, starting up in AmeriLine County, and we had to move our symposium because of the PGA tournament that's coming the following week. So usually it wouldn't affect county board, but it's affecting everybody this time, so my appreciation for meeting today.
And then why don't you tell them why it's important you're there?
Oh, okay.
It's like pulling teeth.
At this conference, it looks like I will be elected president of the Wisconsin County Clerk Association.
Too much humility compared to this.
Thank you.
All right, as we move on, we need a motion on the minutes from the previous meeting, LaFontaine, second by Bride. Any discussion on the minutes? Any discussion? All in favor of approval, please signify by aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And that motion carries. We have no excuses today, we have Supervisor Hamilton joining us remotely. We have no resignations today. Is there any objection to taking these appointments together? Any objection? All right, our appointments are reappointments. The Ethics Committee with the term ending in 2026, Jay Cahn and Mansouza. Ethics Committee term ending in 25, Heather Garrett. The McMillan Memorial Library Board of Trustees, three-year terms, Bill Conning and Susan Feath. The Board of Adjustments, term ending in 2025, Alvaria is alternate one. The Board of Adjustments, a three-year term, Tom Eamon, Dan Forbes, Bill Winch. And the Land Information Council, term ending in 2024, Dispatch Manager, Tony Bestke. I have a motion by Zerfu and a second by Wagner. That was your hand up or was that Adam's hand up, does he? That was yours?
She used to say.
Just waving to me to say hi by Wagner. All right, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you. Do you have any public comment today? Any public comment? All right, I don't see any public comments, so next thing on the agenda is the acknowledgements and recognitions of long-term employees. And at this time, I would call on Brandon Bruehm to come forward, he would, for recognition of his long-term employee. Yeah. Okay, good. All right, so I have the pleasure today to recognize one of our long-term workers, Barb Hoffa. Barb has been with our department for thirty years and has done an excellent job transitioning throughout the years from working with different populations of youth. And what I mean by that is the youth that Barb was probably working with thirty years ago are a bit different, are struggling differently with issues than they are today. So I want to recognize Barb for making it through all the changes in acronyms. Our department is familiar with a lot of different acronyms. Some of those acronyms have evolved over the years. Same acronym for different meetings. She's worked through a number of different computer systems, different assessment tools, and really frankly, different approaches to how we case management. I also want to recognize Barb for her eighteen years of committed experience to one of our boards, and that is the WJ CIA Board, which is Wisconsin General Court Intake Association. So Barb has served on that board for eighteen years and has been part of the conference planning committee for that organization as well. So certainly that's a great commitment and an appreciation from folks across the state that have attended the conferences and been part of that organization. Barb has worked in our Marshfield office and has been a steady hand there. Certainly thirty years is a long time, so she's seen many folks come and go, and fortunately, she's still here to pass down her knowledge to folks that are just beginning their careers in youth justice. So with that, Barb, I'd like you to come forward so we can recognize you. Barb, thank you very much for all of your time and dedication to youth in Wood County. We appreciate your commitment and look forward to more of your time. I don't want to steal any of the sheriff's thunder, but while they're working their way up here, the recognitions of Mike Wyper, and I always describe Mike Wyper as Henry Ronsas guy, flies jets, scoop-a-dives, runs, he does about everything that all of us wish we could do, and he's done it obviously for a long time.
Yeah, he's really nervous, just so you know. I think he's afraid I'm going to roast him, and I probably could, but it's a true honor for me to stand up here and to get the opportunity to recognize Mike. He's been part of our rescue unit for over thirty years as a volunteer. The time and the commitment that he puts towards Wood County, there's nobody like him. He's always been available, day or night. He answers the call if he can't, you know, go to an emergency call, he'll make sure that other people will. But I'm truly, truly honored to stand up here and recognize Mike. Thirty-year commitment is huge. He's worked for many different sheriffs. I'm probably luck the worst. But no, he's just a true, a true champion of being a volunteer, and we're very lucky to have him. I asked a lot of our staff, like, what would be one word you'd describe Mike? And I said, make it a positive word. But dedicated, helpful, a friend, selfless, loyal, reliable, and mind global. Mike will believe almost anything they can tell him. We were going to get a helicopter for rescue, you know, watch bay and all these kind of things, and he believed it. And I unfortunately let it go on a little longer than I should have, so I apologize. No, like I said, I'm very honored that I get to stand up here to award Mike his thirty year plaque for being dedicated to the county that he has. And also, you know, your family too. You know, they deserve a lot of credit. You know, it's not easy being a volunteer, especially a first responder, but you know, Joanne, Brooke, and Sophie, you know, they've had your back for a long time, so I'll make sure that you thank them for having your back as well. So Mike, it's a true honor. Thank you for everything you do, and thank you for being my friend. Did you want to give a speech?
No.
You guys have things to do. Thanks. You know, we have a lot of extremely dedicated long-term employees that we honor. You're just giving the example of Mike Wyper. One of the first times everybody got to know him, they were doing a search and rescue, an unfortunate drowning incident, and I happened to be on the scene, and I said, can you go over to my house and get some more air tanks? He's running the scoop operation. And he said, geez, I haven't get done, it goes tomorrow, I have to fly. Where are you going on vacation? He's going on a flight in a plane. So Mike does pilot jets. He does scoop-a-dive, he does about everything out there that, like I said, all of us wish we could. Mike, your service has been long and dedicated, especially the rescue squad, and thank you very much for that. The last person we have to honor, and I was hoping that our district attorney would be here, he's in court right now, I just checked, he's in front of Judge Potter, but it's Tina Grosh, for her thirty years with the district attorney's office, and I ask that you give her a round of applause as well. Donna, you're up. We'll probably break this up a little bit as your special guest arrives, but right now we have a presentation from the Visit Marshfield Award presentation.
So I'm going to ask Dan and Jeffrey and Seth to come on up, if you would. You didn't bring Dan with you? So who's missing?
Oh, okay, that's too important.
So, good morning, everybody. Supervisor Wagner and I had the honor of attending the Visit Marshfield event maybe ten days ago. And at that event, the Northwood County Park was awarded the Best of 2023 Marshfield Area, Best Outdoor Recreation Area. Chad was not there, he had a commitment, so Supervisor Wagner and I accepted the award on Wood County's behalf. And then he's out of town again, so he sent Dan Bowler, who's the Maintenance Program Supervisor, and the Snowmobile ATV Coordinator, and then one of the persons that works at Northwood County Park, Jeffrey Oakenak. The other person, Seth Dupree, was not able to come today. So I love Northwood County Park. If y'all have not been there, we have a lot of events at Northwood County Park. Brett, Brandon, I can't remember who it was, Brett Brandon, schedules some foster care parent things there, and it's just a wonderful place to camp, for recreation. The grounds are kept up beautifully, and so my commendations to you and to Seth and you for your oversight, but I think we should be very proud. Powersburg was also nominated, I believe, in this category, so we have some things in Wood County to be very, very proud of. So let's give a round of applause to the Parks and Rec Department and to these individuals, particularly for their work with Northwood County Park. Okay, he's going to say a few words.
It isn't just Jeff and I that take care of Northwood County Park, we have very dedicated staff out there. Our LTEs are really good young people that do a lot of unmentionable type work, they do a fantastic job. Our ranger's been out there fifteen to twenty years, he's very knowledgeable. He keeps things tidy and working order. And our host, Karon Harst, he's been out there numerous years, they do a great job. Scott Tramburger is a ranger, he needs a lot of credit because I invited him here today, but he had a long, long weekend, and he was tired. So I just want to make sure credit is due to all those people because they all put forth a lot of effort to make sure that place runs good, and it is, it is a nice park. I worked there myself for fifteen years. Jeff and Seth have been doing a great job since they started there, and they deserve all the credit. They're the ones that make it look and act the way it is, so thank you, appreciate it.
Appreciate, obviously, it's a great park, and obviously, policy starts with our parks committee, Jay and his group do a great job, the county board, lots of fun, and hopefully next year, Powersburg will work the same way, a lot of county parks do, to end up with the same recognition. Thank you so much, Chairman, I really appreciate it. I was going to have a break here because I didn't think our next guest was going to arrive quite a time, but Donna's up here already, and Donna, if you'd like to introduce Dr. Andrews, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. So you may be aware that our long-term campus director up at UW Stevens Point at Marshfield, previously known as The Wood, and still known as The Wood to a lot of people, retired in December. And with her took our maintenance director, Brian Panzer. So we've had some changes at the campus, but I asked Dr. Andrews to come today to introduce himself to you. As you very well know, the campus is owned by the city and the county, and operationally and CIP-wise, supported by both of those entities. So Dr. Andrews has become a friend, and I'm so appreciative of your friendship. I still don't understand why somebody would move from Queens, New York, to Marshfield, but you know what? He can explain that to you, and we are just delighted to have him. He's a very enthusiastic individual. He, I told him I'd give him six to nine months to learn everything that Michelle brought to the table, so he has a real, a big feat to feel because Michelle did a marvelous job, and not only was she a wonderful campus director, but her involvement in the community really made her very knowledgeable about how to work with partners. Tony's got some really big ideas about what we can do, and so I'm anxious for him to share with you and introduce himself to you. So please join me in welcoming Dr. Anthony Andrews to the area.
Thank you, Donna.
I hope you have too much trouble finding a class.
A little bit. Good morning. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
How are you? Thank you very much for inviting me today, Donna, I really appreciate it. It's been a very exciting six months, first six months, and looking forward to some of the things that we'll be able to do in the future with your support. Donna's been a great part and has become a good friend. Ed has welcomed me into the city along with the rest of the members on the commission, and I can start naming people, but I'll probably leave somebody out because that's not good in politics. I'll start with saying that, first of all, once again, moving from Queens to Marshfield has been a bit of a challenge in some ways. We have a whole different system, City University of New York, a lot different from the University of Wisconsin system, and of course, the culture's a little different also. So learning the culture, not only of the city, learning the culture of the state of Wisconsin, and going up to Madison as opposed to Albany, has been different, but I've enjoyed it. This has been a great experience. Not only have I been welcomed to Marshfield, but I've been excited about the partnerships I've been able to develop already. So we've already begun to think about some things that we can do in the future. Well, the first couple of months, we started talking about things that Marshfield could do in terms of what we would like to do, not just for the city of Marshfield, but what we could do with the community of Wood County as a whole, right? Because it's down in Totsville, there's a partnership, has been a partnership for years. And so what I'd like to have is I'd like to have the legislators from the other parts of Wood County get more involved with the campus. It is still called The Wood, and it is still The Wood to many people, not just in Marshfield but outside of Marshfield. So we want to see if we can get people more involved from the city of Marshfield and outside of the city of Marshfield, involved with the campus. And how do we do that, right? We become community partners. I started at the end the other day about this, and as we were talking about the city being involved and what we needed in the city, we also talked about the needs of the county to some extent when I got here. One of the first things that Ed said to me, Ed Wagner said to me, our council president, he said, Tony, you're right, we need daycare, so we need support for daycare. And what do you think about the Marshfield campus being a space for daycare for Wood County? I said, that's a great idea. I think it'd be wonderful. In fact, if we could replicate the gazelle setup for the main campus at Stevens Point and replicate that on our campus, that would be great. But I think we not only have daycare slots available, but we certainly have teachers and people that can certainly assist with creating a daycare, because we do need daycare, and that is a big, big concern for residents of Wood County, not just Marshfield. So I thought about that, and I said, that could work. And then I said, there's something that cancer came up with before I got here, and something that attracted me to Marshfield, and that was in itself a STEM high school. I said, wow, that's really creative. Now, I knew that the previous institution I worked at, I worked in New York City University for twenty-seven years, and we had a York early college academy. And so the early college academy had a lot of students to go to high school in the last two years, the eleventh and twelfth grades, and receive college credits, and then transition into the college, into university. So I said, well, that's great, maybe we could do something very similar. Well, I thought, what if we created a STEAM high school? And we don't necessarily need to build anything on campus, although we have a hundred acres which is supervised by many of you and overseeing all the facilities, but what if we took some of our STEM classrooms and actually used those to create high school cohorts, learning communities? And we got students from all across the area, not just Marshfield, Spencer, Stratford, Wisconsin Rapids. Shane is coming to visit me, I believe, and we've already had Ron Masmusson talk to me about the possibility of something like this happening. And also Craig has come over and toured the campus and talked to me about possibly including some of the kids from Wisconsin Rapids in this STEAM high school. Well, we don't have anything like this in central Wisconsin. This would be a model for the entire state of Wisconsin if we were able to create a STEAM high school. So one of the most challenging aspects of STEM for college students is that a lot of our high school students are not properly prepared to excel in the STEM fields. The hardest fields to compete in in the United States are the most, not only the most challenging, but the fastest growing fields are the STEM fields. So we can get our kids in the central Wisconsin area better prepared to succeed in STEM fields by going to a STEM high school, receiving college credits, and then getting the classes they need by college professors to make sure that they can excel once they get into college, well, we'd have a better chance of them excelling and succeeding once they graduate. So I said, well, it's a great idea, so we're looking at trying to create a STEM, or what I call a STEAM high school, because we're going to include the arts. The arts have been shown to increase success in STEM fields, of course, so we'll make it a STEAM high school. And then we said, how do we partner with other city agencies? How do we partner with groups that we think could be more involved with the campus? Well, we have the campus of Marshfield right next door, the Marshfield Clinic and the Marshfield Hospital. What are they doing? Well, they've done a lot of stuff at Stevens Point, but they said, well, we haven't done much with youth. I said, well, that would be great if you did stuff with us, because you're right next door. So what can we do together? Well, the first thing I said was, you know, I think you guys could be more involved with the community. So if we did the cultural fair, why don't you guys become partners with the cultural fair? And what else could you guys use? They said, well, you know, you know, we have a change in leadership, essentially it's coming open, they're going to, they're going to come in now, merge with us. I said, well, what are you doing to create leadership opportunities at the hospital and the clinic? I said, I've talked to the foundation already, we've talked about possibly creating some programs, certificate programs or classes for research coordinator or research assistant positions, which are in high demand nationally, and so possibly we can do some stuff with the research foundation. Well, what do you think we can do with leadership? You see, we have an MBA program in leadership on the campus. A lot of people continue to think of The Wood as a two-year college, but it truly isn't. The Wood is a four-year university. We are part of the University of Wisconsin Stevens Point. See, you have a four-year university next door that is not being fully utilized, I think. So I said, what if we took some topic courses in the MBA program, which you can get, if you go to Marshfield, by the way, you can get an MBA in leadership in five years, an MBA in five years on our campus? Well, what if we decide to take nine of those topic credits and convert those into hospital management leadership courses? We could do that, because a lot of time, organizations are just not prepared to give people leadership opportunities or training and ready to assume those leadership opportunities. Does that make sense? I'm sure there are a lot of legislators that are not necessarily trained, you become legislators, you have an opportunity to become, because people elect you, and I'm sure there are a lot of people that would say, wow, I wish I had some training for this job, this is like on-the-job training. You become a legislator, you're learning on the job. What if we had an opportunity to train people to be leaders, especially major institutions like Marshfield Clinic? Would they be better prepared in their leadership roles? Would they be better prepared to serve the people? I think so. I said, possibly, that's something we can do. And what about your simulation rooms? We have space for a simulation room on our campus, we have a lot of space. You have a small space, not even, I guess maybe for about here to about the end of the wall, around here to that side of the wall, and that's the simulation space. That's the place where they're preparing people to be doctors, residents. You certainly could use a larger space. We have space here. They said, well, that's an idea too. We've come up with a number of different ideas, things that I think would be successful, things that I think would work, and not just for the residents of Marshfield, but for residents of Wood County. I don't have a proposal here today, I'm just sharing some ideas and things because I've been given six minutes and six to nine months to get it all together by my assembly person. But I do think with cooperation with the support of the legislators here, we'll be able to do a lot more with the UW Commission, I say, Alan, some of the members here, I think, again, we have an excellent opportunity to do things that have not been done in central Wisconsin before, and I think this campus can be the model for that, but with your support and with your help. So I'm here to deduce myself today. Why Queens to Marshfield? Because this is an opportunity that I could not pass up. Dreams are made in New York, but the magic is made in Marshfield. Thank you. Thank you very much. I have to remember that line. That's pretty good. No, we appreciate your being here, we appreciate your coming in today to speak to us, we hope some of those ideas and visions come to fruition, because we do have the opportunity, we have the facilities, and we have the capacity, and all we have to do is work on that. So thank you very, very much. All right, moving on into the packet today. You can notice at the end of the packet, we have a, an opportunity to go into closed session to discuss some of the opportunities that may present themselves, and some of the discussion that's happening within the pit committee, and I thought it was appropriate that we shared that information with the entire board, so that will happen at the end of the packet. So for referrals, we had a resolution from Price County in the decision regarding the distribution of proceeds from sales tax delinquent, or the tax, the delinquent tax proceeds, and that went to Heather and to the judicial member side of the commission, it's kind of a major topic with the treasurer's organization that they put forward. All right, we can all hear Operations Committee, pages six and seven, they're meeting from June sixth. Human Resources Department, month of letter comments, ten to fifteen. Office of the Treasurer, sixteen. Wellness, seventeen. And then that brings us to the first resolution in the packet, we're on fourth by the operations.
This will be Resolution twenty-three dash six dash one, to allow for posting in lieu of publication for county notices as allowed pursuant to Wisconsin statutes, Chapter nine eighty-five. Fiscal note, savings in publication costs.
Motion by Bride, second by Voight. Is there any discussion on the resolution? Any discussion? Trent, your screen is...
Go ahead.
There we go.
Go.
Please vote.
Vote for the app.
And that resolution passed nineteen zero. All right, moving forward to the packet, page nineteen, second resolution, coming forth from the Operations Committee.
This will be Resolution twenty-three dash six dash two, to amend the 2023 budget for University Commission UW Stevens Point at Marshfield for the purpose of funding higher than anticipated expenditures. Fiscal note, to transfer sixteen thousand five hundred fifty-six dollars from available balance and contingency to the University Commission UW Stevens Point at Marshfield. At the time of this request, the funds available in contingency are six hundred thousand dollars. The adjustment to the budget totals sixteen thousand five hundred fifty-six dollars.
And motion by Roseanne, second by Zerfu. Discussion? Any discussion? Any questions? Please vote.
Hamilton, yes.
Thank you, Brad. And that resolution passes sixteen three, sixteen three. All right, moving forward, page twenty-one and twenty-two, it's the Health and Human Services Committee meeting of May twenty-fifth. North Central Community Action, their meeting of four-ten on twenty-two and twenty-three. Month of letter comments from the Health Department, pages twenty-four through twenty-eight. And then from the Human Services Department, the annual director of rulings on twenty-nine, and that runs through page thirty-six.
that runs through page 36. We have minutes of the Public Safety Committee from June 12, pages 37, 38, 39, it runs through 41. Any questions on the Public Safety Minutes? And then we have the monthly report from the Sheriff's Department, that runs pages 42 to 64, 42 to 64. And once you scroll through all those pages, you'll come to the next resolution in the packet brought forth by the Safety Committee. Trent, if you agree to the resolution.
This will be Resolution 23-6-3, to purchase a subscription to Everbridge Mass Notification System in order to ascertain its usefulness for the county. Fiscal note, none. Grant funding within the emergency management budget will cover the cost of $21,927.
I have a motion by Zurflu. I have a second by Lightman. Discussion? Any discussion? I ask you to please vote.
Hamilton, yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Hamilton. And that resolution passed 18-1. All right, moving forward, the SEED Committee, pages 66 through 68, and Supervisor Lightman.
You remembered, Mr. Chair.
I wrote it down. I don't know what it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I talked to five or six people, maybe it was seven or eight, before I decided to speak to this item this morning. But this is something that all members of the Wood County Board need to be aware of because of a loss that could be incurred with UW Extension. So I'm on page 68, I'd like to mention that, the third page of the SEED, June 7 packet, and it's number 14 on the extension, I'm going to speak to it, so if you want to go The line item, now, this is about natural resources educator, but not just one, 3.5 throughout the state. And the operative paragraph is the second one. So I'm just going to read that to you real briefly. Jeremy Solow, Director, said, he shared that the natural resources education position was inadvertently, inadvertently left out of the DNR budget request for 3.5 educators. How this affects us right here in our own community is this is the job that's held by Anna James. And she's been with us only for a short time, probably six, seven, eight months. She worked in Adams County, we hired her from there. She replaced Rachel Whitehair, who left for employment at the University of Nebraska. This was something that I fought for, I think, four years ago when Rachel came on. Anna's office is downstairs, the extension, on the first floor. We stand a chance of losing her. So I talked to Jeremy about ten minutes before the meeting started and said, "Should I bring this before the whole board?" And he said, "Yes, please do." I will do anything as seat chair and as a believer in the function and services of the extension to support these 3.5 positions that could be lost because of inadvertent oversight. I have trouble with that, but I think it's something that we all have to be aware of. I think we have to speak to the right people. I talked to Donna about it. I know Katrina Shanglin is working on it. We need to retain, we just can't lose 3.5 natural resource educators. So now you're aware. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Lightman. I see Supervisor Roser, any additional comment regarding this?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just would like clarification to make sure I understand this. So these positions were not cut by Joint Finance Committee. They were inadvertently left out of the DNR budget that they submitted to the Joint Finance Committee. Am I understanding that correctly?
The word is inadvertent.
Thank you for that clarification.
Glad you guys could answer, because I had no idea.
I thought that was the reason.
All right, any other comments on the SEED minutes? From June 7, 66, 68. Supervisor Clonan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think 67 of your packet, the last motion there under D, I'd like to speak to that. I served on the Central Wisconsin Board, State Fair Board, and not once was this ever mentioned. I concede the $32,000 that we've been given, the State Board, State Fair Board, for the junior fair is proper and has been. But what came up was an additional $6,000. And I sat on that board. I thought I was on the committee for the junior fair because I really believe in four agents, things that go on there. However, I said, "When is the next meeting when we make committee appointments?" Well, he said, "It's tomorrow in this." And not once in the year and some months that I've been on that board was it ever mentioned to ask for an additional $6,000, $6,000 for that junior fair. I think now that Brad Hamilton, Supervisor Hamilton, is going to be on that committee, I think before the committee, as was discussed, that maybe if there's some money left over, we will give that $6,000. I don't think they should give it unless it's really needed and it's talked about at least at a meeting. So that's my thought on this.
Thank you, Supervisor Clonan. Any other discussion on the SEED minutes? Any other discussion on the SEED minutes? All right, our update from UW Extension, pages 69 to 78, 69 to 78, from Land and Water Conservation, theirs from 79 to 84, 79 to 84. The Citizens Groundwater Group meeting of May 15 on 85 and 86. Update for Planning and Zoning, 87, 8 and 9. Okay, minutes of the Judicial and Legislative Committee, 90, 91 and 92, that's their June 2 meeting, ANL. Minutes of the Residential Options Committee, there's a couple of those on May 30 and on 612, they run from 93 to 97, 93 to 97. Update from the Child Support Agency, from the Director of Ruling, on page 98. From our Clerk of Courts, on 99. From the Court Council, on 100 and 101. Victim Witness Coordinators, on 102. And then that brings us to the Highway Committee, Highway Infrastructure Recreation Committee meeting, the Hurp meeting on June 1, 103, 4 and 5. The monthly update from the Office of the Highway Commissioner, beginning on 106, runs through 110. I see the Commissioner back there. You just finished your summer conference, which I was invited down to. It seemed like a great success. It looked like it was extremely well-attended. Another one of those outstanding partners of ours, employees, who's the president of his organization. So we're all, congratulations on that as well. All right, that's 106 to 110. The update from the Park and Forestry Department, 111 through 115. And then that brings us to Resolution on page 116, supporting documentation on 117 to 121, that goes along with the past resolution.
This will be Resolution 23-6-4, to transfer administrative responsibilities for the local roads improvement program from the Highway Commissioner to the Wisconsin County Highway Association, who interwill contract with the Wisconsin Towns Association and the League of Wisconsin Municipalities for a pilot program beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2025. Fiscal note, $14,605.
And the motion by Clonan, I have a second by Lightman. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Any discussion? Donna, if you'd please vote.
Hamilton, yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Hamilton. And that resolution carried 18-1, 18-1. All right, moving forward, page 122 through 124, the minutes of the Department of Information and Algae Committee, beginning first. The monthly update from that department on pages 125 through 128. Monthly letter of comments from our Facilities Manager on 129. And then that brings us to the resolution on page 30 and as from D, fifth minute.
This will be Resolution 23-6-5, to amend the 2023 maintenance budget to include expenditures for projects that were in process but not completed after December 31, 2022. Fiscal note, no additional cost to Wood County. The adjustment to the budget totals $100,000.
A motion by Brey and a second by Voight. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? All right, please vote.
Hamilton, yes.
Thank you, Brad. And that resolution passed 19-0. All right, moving forward, the Central Wisconsin State Fair Board Directors Meeting Minutes, 131 and 132, that's from April 17. We have minutes of the Jail Construction and HO Committee on 133 and 134. And then on page 135, we have the resolution in regard to the long-term, now, the long-term budget you just did, and that would entertain a motion to that effect. By Balance, that, and I have a second by Zurflu. All right, is there any discussion there? Shouldn't be other than congratulations. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries unanimously. All right, as we're moving forward here, first of all, for those of you who won't be in the room, the next county board meeting is Tuesday, July 11. That's a date change again, Tuesday, July 11. I think that's because of a trial. Yes, because of a trial. At some point in time, we actually have a county board, which will not dictate movements around, but this is July 11. So the last thing I know, I'll get to that in just a second, is going into closed session, and I'll read it later, in regard to some of the discussions that have occurred where the city's contacted us, and we've had some ongoing discussion as to what's going to happen, what could happen possibly with all the properties we have out here in regard to parking. And the PIT Committee, Director of Facilities Manager, to engage in those discussions to see where everybody is on this. So with that being said, at this point in time, we're going to go into closed session. So if you're not a member of the board, or you're not somebody who's presenting or a member of that committee, who's been integral in those discussions, Jason would be one of those, for sure. I would ask everybody else to leave the room, and then at that point in time, we will go into closed session.